Would draw on so many days' notice if any funds we could spend in the non-fundable. And then, so that would be one topic. Another topic would be to have a debrief from Roger and Kim on what they had in Switzerland. I know that Laney has distributed trips coming and take away, key takeaway points which we've received today and I have read, you know, there's behind over two or three million ago. And then, a third area would be to have a philosophical discussion on what we've heard in recent days and what our current thinking is on how we want to be positioned for the April Executive Committee meeting and any other topics that are on that.
I think that that is the way to start. Rather than the whether we're going to sign on for three more years at 50 K a year, you can start with number three.
I think that's...
That will naturally lead to number one.
Yes, that will. And then, well, maybe we ought to start, I guess, the Switzerland trip is part of number three too, the water drink thing is on that one. That's the subset. So, I don't know, I don't know if any given, I think last night's Q and A gives some insight into at least my view of the world and maybe we'd like to comment on whether it's a good representation. I mean, for starters, on any, say, the importance of my experience of the other days, discussion. I don't think anything else. I mean, I, I guess, something, position of mine would be, I think that we should continue to go forward. I think that we should sign the envelope and make $50,000 a year. And I think, in the end, I think we should preserve links, do everything we can to preserve our exit ramps and vehicles, which I think Park City has a little stronger ones, but I think that they're in a similar situation to us in terms of our concerns. They have a little stronger position because the tentative local control that's in the charter is stronger for them because the real estate and land use evolves, especially on any tunnel connection would likely involve them more than us. And so, they have more direct access than we do. But I, I think, provided that we can assure exit ramps, I'd like, I would be in favor of the blueprint being studied as proposed with whatever modifications may come out of the coming period, that the EIS go forward studying blueprint that includes a connection.
Well, what I would like to hear is from you and Roger about, I mean, we don't have, Roger, you didn't pretty clear about how you feel. I'd like to know what, if anything changed as a result of your trip as far as how you feel about Mountain Accord? And like, I don't really know how, how Kim feels. I think I have been more vociferous about how I feel. And I'd like to know how you feel and if it changed at all as a result of your trip.
You want to take that here?
People are so tired of hearing from me about this, and I'm happy to let anybody else hear.
Well, all along, I feel like I've been a little suspicious of the tunnel and who it's going to benefit. And I'd say that's still a major concern of mine. After going over there, I have, you know, one of the things it provided is the opportunity to spend a lot of time talking with Laney Jones and expressing the concerns that we've heard so far from our community, primarily about the tunnel. We all want to find transportation solutions. And I think it's really hard when we discuss Mountain Accord to separate the tunnel from the whole project and what we can get from it and how it's going to benefit our community. And so, I think I came away with realizing, I mean, I want to stay in the process because I see what we can potentially get out of it and gain from it. And when we were over in Switzerland, we saw amazing examples of great transportation systems. And we used it every day, all day long, literally every single, you know, every day that we were there, whether it was a train, a bus, a funicular, they used gondolas, trams. In the, the trains were various types of trains. And we got to see how the schedules worked, which was pretty amazing. I mean, this, everything was scheduled, whether you were going from a bus to a train or to a, a train onto a tram. They were, they work every year of putting the schedule together to make sure those are interconnected. So you had at most a 10 to 15 minute wait between those. Pricing schedules were done the same way. You know, if you took a certain type of, you know, if it was a regional trip, you were going to pay a certain amount versus a more localized trip might be another cost. And then, the different path structures, you know, that's all said countrywide every year is why interesting. And there's a lot of potential. I think people say, well, do you think we're going to get a train or do you think we should just use bus? And I think we're going to have to use a combination of those things. And we'll use buses, I could see gondolas. And then, I think the most exciting thing was what Roger mentioned earlier in the meeting, but I think some of you that have come in more recently didn't hear. We met with a woman who's the vice chair, vice mayor of Zermatt. And they have an issue of getting people from the mountain back down to the hotel or core center of town. At the end of the day, they have three times the amount of people coming off the mountain as they have the ability with their current bus and taxi system, which are all electric, to move them back to that hotel center. And so, they are working with a company, a university that's utilizing roller coaster technology. And they've come up with a 3K system that can move the people. They just have to figure out exactly where they're going to put it because they have narrow roads which accommodate their electric vehicles and an occasional horse drawn carriage and, and then they have a river. So they're trying to figure out if they can put it down the river somehow. Well, I'm not sure what Cap does at that. We didn't get into that much detail, but...
It was certainly...
I think we have a better opportunity than having to put it in the river. But it sounds like it's very flexible, it's reasonably priced. But I really appreciated hearing all the input last, or last night. And I think people think that we have Chris, who's a representative to Mountain Accord. And so, he's the only one at the table expressing the views of our community. But everyone up here has been involved in the Mountain Accord process for the last two years almost, whether it was serving on one of the systems groups or, you know, I mean, we've all done that, we all served on one of those, plus we've been attending additional meetings, plus we've been having individual meetings. And I think they thoroughly understand our concerns with the tunnel. And we plan on having more meetings with some of the people in the management group of Mountain Accord to express that.
And, and our concerns over 248 and 224 and the basin issues.
Exactly. And that's when I refer to our issues, I mean, that's part of that. Last night, Peter Metcalf was talking about how, one reason he really likes the process is because over the years, they keep getting bombarded with one idea after another, and they keep coming and then they'll go away, and another idea comes up and then it goes away. And he feels like this is going to put to bed some of those competing interests and they'll have a master plan and it'll be followed. And so, my hope is that by allowing that tunnel exploration to go through, we can at least then have the information that comes out of there. And we'll know once and for all, you know, is that even possible? Is the cost so outrageous? Is it so detrimental to the environment? Are the economic impacts just not there to support it? And I guess we may get different answers than that, but I think it's words going through and having the study completed in order to get that information. And I think we also need to stay at the table in order to get some of the components we need within our community to solve our issues.
Very well said.
And I really liked the lamb shake.
The what?
The lamb shake.
Oh.
There's no place for lamb.
No, I don't bring up any food at this point.
Can I summarize? I think the transportation experience in Zermatt, we saw truly commuter trains, boat trains, ice ski trains, trams, what's the word?
And gondolas.
Gondolas.
And funiculars.
I did ride a funicular, a camera funicular on a ski resort. Cog trains, different gauges of cog trains, cog trains that have one tooth in the cog, cog trains that have two teeth in the cog and offset rails.
Which deep.
And riding a cog train is actually kind of remarkable and relates to what's going on here because if they're going to run a train up Cockwood Canyon, which means it's going to have to be a cog train because of the incline. I think anything about, if you remember, is it 6%, 7%, 8%?
Yeah, the, the light rail doesn't work.
Light rail, the way of all those, but it doesn't look kind of common. And commuter rail won't work of, hard was enough. Hard was is too steep for a commuter train. We learned that in Switzerland, which is part of the process. So we saw a, a, and it was actually a, a hook. We took a ferry across Lake Lucerne to get to the cog train. They, they do transportation on scheduling pricing. It's remarkable. We would get on, we had an eight day pass, we would get on a train and make sure we could drive through the pass. We'd step on a bus, make sure the bus drove the pass. So we'd get on a ferry, make sure the ferry drove the pass. They covered every form of transportation and then all the ten to hundred. So they do, they do well. And they built the roadways starting in 18, in the 1850s. We redid them in early part of the 20th century again and after World War II. And unfortunately, in the United States, we've been carrying railway lines instead of maintaining railway lines, so we're facing a pretty high hill to put the rail on. We took, we took some time to ski in Zerlot and to use the tram system there to see how that worked and combine, literally, we were kind of built to go down the mountain and to Switzerland and to Italy and back around. I will state that using the tram, the base in Zerlot, there were, you can't tell you how many people. We left, we brought our ticket at nine o'clock and we started, our skis touched the snow in London. So it took two hours to get to the top. And that led us to a connection, I think, because it took a long time to get there. There were a huge number of people, it was, we carried it fast on her side.
And we probably took a different route. We were skiing within half an hour.
Eight hundred directions, we found our way.
That's...
So probably, probably guess that there were 500 people at the, at the base of the tram we were trying to get on, knowing that this would be a plazegraded. We got squeezed in kind of cow attention into, you know, a smaller line that resulted in disney rabbit system to get actually along the tram. It took us up, it took three, two changes to get to the top. And it was just frankly slow. I mean, it took from the time we got on the line to get along the tram was over a half hour. So that's something to consider in terms of any kind of a connection. What we have here currently in Park City is, I believe, an outstanding guest experience. Whether you're a day skier or a destination visitor, it's pretty easy to ski, it's pretty easy to get along, except for certain times, lift lines tend not to be too long. This year was quite different with Park City Mountain Resort. I think in the canyons, partly it had to do with less snow, really not so long, but it created longer lines. So I think, you know, whatever we do, we always have to keep in mind that our guest experience is, and in the resort business, is paramount. And if we ruin that guest experience, we inhibit it. Go someplace else, just any other kind of destination experience, it goes someplace else that's not as good here. We have a competitive advantage over the Colorado resorts in that it takes hours to get to a Colorado resort from a major metropolitan center. Here it takes 35 minutes from the airport to your bed just about. That's a huge competitive advantage in anything we do, such a growing train from the airport to the backwoods of Park City is important in that guest experience. So we have to remember what's important for us. My position after last night, listening to him, and, you know, we'll say, I had a conversation with Chris yesterday and he said that, you know, unfortunately, it feels like this connection, maybe it would be better for people to leave the connection off the table and be rid of this entire process because there are economic issues, there are financial issues, there are recreational issues that matter in this process. And we're a little overwhelmed, overwhelmed by the connection issue. The connection issue is critical and I do believe, and I stated before I announced it, I believe that it hurts us. I believe it hurts business in Park City and we believe that it will contribute to growth as soon as we put a train station down to San Diego, we're going to attract, we're attracting to that. And I think that that's a problem. I think it will probably attract people moving up here from the middle part of the Salt Lake Valley because it's easy to get here. I think that's not such a good result. And I think they're a lot of unknowns for doing something that drastic. We can't be helped right now, with our profession of that. We are a major economic driver for the economy in Utah. And change, making drastic changes like that carries the possibility of, and so I don't know. That's it. Even looking at, I was a little surprised when one of the line about the environmental issues, the economic issues and the rec issues, questions are all good. I'm not sure we could drive benefit to some counties, even after hurricaness.
Of?
Of all those other issues. Protecting the wilderness.
Oh, I see. You're saying all four?
Yeah. Protecting wilderness on the front part of the Los Angeles region. There's a tangential benefit to us, but I don't know that the economic, I don't know what the significant benefit, I mean, there's the global, we did the Utah, we did the central Los Angeles, it's good to have all that protected. I think we get that. But as a county and using county resources, those are wise to that level. Please step away from the table. Is that why we go through? That doesn't change if you have the more controversial issues protection that may develop into that as they go forward. The economic issues are, I do think that there are twenty tasks. Recreational issues, part of my problem, you know, in some of the discussions that we had during the Mountain Accord process, is the recreational issues are likely to draw more day type visitors into our recreation environment and make for a worse experience for residents and for visitors. It's going to ploy it up. Sorry if it's sort of like that. I'm not sure that there's a great benefit to give to some county in Park City from those recreational issues.
Is that one thing there? You know, we know that additional growth is coming and if they don't channel that growth within those two canyons, then we'll get a lot of spillover effect. So I think that is a direct benefit to us on this side, to have that well managed over there, managed in a way that can accommodate additional people that we know are coming. I mean, you can plan for it or you can put your head just in it. And I think we've got to make sure that there's things in place to move those people and have them directed in the right way than just kind of a free for all.
But are, are being involved in this process affect that?
Actually, that's one point.
It does give us some input.
I don't disagree, it does give us some information. I just, you know, at the end of the day, I ask a question, how substantial our input is? And it feels like at the end of the day, as we go through this process, that we're in a position where we're kind of hanging on and writing a check in hopes that we will get some unmade benefit to some of the transportation costs. That's what it feels like, because those things are looking pretty rough. And that's what, that's my concern. I'm just unsure.
I guess our, our, what I have been referring to is our inner circle, which is 224, 248, 48. I mean, that's a significant part of the plan.
And getting them for the airport.
And to get from the airport here. And I think what we've been able to do through the process is help them to understand how critical that is, and not only to us, but it's important for their economy too. I mean, we're, we're...
I don't disagree. Having been on the Transportation Systems Committee, I can tell you that we were asked about that.
No, but we...
Yeah, we made it clear that we were never asked about that. But the change, okay, I want to be really clear about this because I don't want the Cockwood canyons having any misunderstanding about my position or I think, I think I can speak for the county here, for the council, we understand that the Cockwood canyons have challenges. They have avalanches, they have traffic problems, they have partner problems, they have, they have ingress and egress problems. They've got very, very, very real problems. And they deserve to be able to find some solutions and have some assistance with the solutions to those problems. Absolutely. And if they want to run a train up Little Cockwood and have an action, have a big cock wood, I don't have a problem with that. It doesn't affect us. Yeah, I mean, by doing those resorts, it may affect the ski industries here, but I don't think our resort providers worry about that. So make no mistake, I'm not saying that the Little Cockwood should not, their property should be addressed. And I think part of my problem, and I said it in one of our meetings, is that we didn't discuss Little Cockwood's specific problems. We didn't, and none of our transportation meetings, did we sit down and really analyze those and do the problem analysis of how could we help you, just like we had a conversation with Leslie, whether, and Peter, how could we help you in the next six months, in the next year? Not how could we help you in 10 to 12 years after we go through the entire process of the train? You know, you've got several similar years to the beginning of the train. So they do deserve that. I, I just question how much we can get out of this. You know, if there were a second study, if somebody came up with concrete, we went over specifically at this, we think that these kinds of roads would work well, if we had more concrete discussions on it, I think I'd feel better about it. But it feels like that bridge line going west, south, south west, is going to be addressed first and that we may need an afterthought. And I think David here is particularly at some parts here.
Can I, can I add something that Roger said? Go for it.
Wait, can I just?
You are, yeah.
Can I just ask, so are you, if you, are you for or against staying in the process?
It's a hard, you know, we're often asked to contribute money again. We're asked to double our budget. It's not such a marginal money, but it's money that we could, we could hire a consultant. Laney Jones, she wrote it, we have, we talked about transportation every single meeting that we sent down to Henry's group.
Every...
Every train, I mean, we did nothing to talk about transportation on this trip. And that's a point we actually wanted to make, and said, you know, I think I finally understand your concerns. I get it. I think what you need where you're going in terms of looking at alternatives, whether it's gondolas or monorails or subways or rotation devices or whatever. And she said, I, we can help you find consultants that can help guide you. Those aren't going to be our consultants because they don't have special expertise in the kinds of transportation that you're looking for. But there are consultants out there and we can help you. So I appreciate that. But could we take that $150,000 and use it in other, to identify, we don't have a huge problem around it. You know, moving people can be helpful to Park City and I think it's a grow rate here in a really efficient way. But they're coming fairly efficiently right now.
Right.
The question is, where's the best place? Our goal is from the border, from the entrance, we've got to separate them from the airport. Is that best done at the airport? Which I think their peers told us in the transportation study, that announcement they found a better way to separate them with the airport than at the entrance to town. If that's true, then a better source of transportation way as B I T, or a train from the airport is the better way. But we're still going to need transportation, and we're still going to need some way. Vengen, Zermatt and Saseby are three cities that have closed borders to cars. You cannot get a car to a city, you're all electric vehicle, small vehicle, whether it be, it's too, you put a golf course where it's, you put a tin around so that it looks like nuts. There's a lot of things to watch, but it was very effective. Vengen's trash comes in and out of the rail. There's supplies for food. We saw a tram with a remarkable system where they would put goods, you know, for restaurants and stuff in a big square container that they hooked to the bottom of the tram. So we lifted up to, this was to...
Well, it had like a built in train, or a built in platform, so they would just load it on. And then when it got to the top, before we even got off the tram to go up to the little, it was, it was before we went, we were getting people.
Wall.
Covered in a little part of the term, the Swiss term. It was off before we were.
Yeah, so it was a big arm, lifted off, and his arm would slide with this thing, unloaded on the platform. And then those workers would come with their little electric vehicles and do everything. I, I'm just getting the process, I, I'm reluctant to leave the process, like maybe it's kind of the same reluctance to walk away from a car accident.
Oh, geez.
But I don't think I'm going to commit $150,000. I think other departments can, at stages, to see if some of these questions get answered as soon as we, see if some of what we need starts to coalesce and determine.
Well, basically, the commitments, $15,000 per year, we can pull out.
Just cancel.
With, yeah. Chris calls out the ready to cancel, so.
So I have some questions, I'd like to discuss on what you think, what you all think would be the downside of exiting the process. What's, what's the downside of not continuing?
I'm going to address that.
Because I'm on the test.
Yeah.
So I need to be persuaded one way or another.
I think, maybe the biggest downside, I think, is that we will miss a potential opportunity to get help with the large transit and transportation issues that face us, including transit from the airport to the airport basin and intro basin. I think that the, I agree with Roger that most of the environmental issues are come canyon centric and many of the recreational issues likewise. I think that the economic issues are connected and I think the state is interested in Mountain Accord because it will... McCord because it will create a new story to tell, it's a strong economic story. And I think we're part of that story, and our challenge is to figure out a way to be part of that story, helping us and not hurting us. And so, the flip side of that is if we pull out, I think that we could be negatively viewed by the legislature, by state leaders and things. I don't, I think that the process will go on without us in some fashion.
In every fashion?
Well...
Rather than not go on without it?
Well, we would no longer, of course, be part of it, nor...
But the process, and not, of course, I have a couple of riding halted.
No, it would, I guess that's, yeah, so it's not like the world revolves around us in this, in this sense. I think the biggest one, which I think I'm still able to cover, is that we're going to overlook, and I still believe that...
We might be overlooked if...
Well, we will.
Potential future benefits, it's all our fault.
I believe that there will be good that will come out of this for our account, net good.
Okay, so I'm not having to flip that question and ask the Senate?
Yes.
And that's Roger. What do you think the down, what can we envision a downside of staying in the process could be?
It's only, and the only downside is, as I said, the critics. If we're anything clear about the way we feel about the connection. And they submit the connection, the examinations, the need for policy to, and I don't want to ask them. And if we go off late stage and say we're not favorable, we're just communicating that. I'm concerned about the damage that it can cause to us, whether the state legislature is married to this, others are married to a connection, and we're communicating anything other than we're not. And later decide to pull the deck out, something that they may not completely follow above it. Assuming that we, as has been stated, if we're not in favor of this, I can afford that the analogy used to, we assist everybody with planning a wedding, we're supposed to be at, and we don't show up at the end, that one's a good analogy.
Do you see any downside in staying in the process, through the E I S process, that includes a connection that we're against?
As long as we're communicating we're against.
What more do we need to do to communicate that?
Well, I think, as a county, we've done a pretty clear job, I think. We said early on, we had a meeting several months ago, we came out of that meeting and said, as a county, we are not in favor of this. We might want to, I think what we're doing right now is taking each other's pulse, to make sure that it still travels. But that's what we communicated before. I, in the last month, six weeks, whatever it's been, I've been over with that, because I've done, won't there to be a misunderstanding of my position, certainly. So, I've been over with that.
I just have some, I just want to put sure that our staying in the process, regardless of what we said, that the fact that we're staying in the process is never construed as E I S, ever.
That's my concern.
You know, I think we've had some opportunities, several opportunities, to make that really clear. And I think from the get-go, we were concerned that the tunnel was specifically a driver for the city of Sandy. And, you know, we're hearing things other than that, that now that it doesn't have to have the connection to make their part work. What is being maybe a great additional benefit? I think they think so, in allowing recreationists to go back and forth and that type of thing. But over the past, reading my conversations with Lani, she was trying to assure me of that, and I said, you know, we keep hearing, well, they said this, or they said that, without us having those direct conversations with some of the leaders along the Wasatch Front. I mean, Chris has had them within the Mountain McCord executive team meeting, but I have asked Lani to set up a meeting so Chris and I can meet with them directly, so we can make sure that they understand.
I would be in favor of writing to that effect, signing that. Whatever we need to do, if we're going to stay in this process, whatever we need to do, we need to do it to make sure that everyone's very clear that we are not for that connection. And I'm telling you, I'm very concerned about staying in the process, whereas part of the NEPA and the E I S, the connection issue. And the second thing, I mean, I obviously can see where the votes are, so.
Do you talk about the votes?
We're not, we're not voting for...
Do you talk about that other point that you just made?
I don't agree, oh, we're not.
Because you may be able to, because Chris, Chris just talked about these offerings, potential offers to get out of this process. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the issues that there's still a panic in that decision number is a proposal that I think Chris made, that if a connection doesn't happen, Park City and some counties are not. And I don't think that that issue's been resolved entirely in the language of what it really means, is that correct?
Yeah. I think that, to that point, you're a question, you know, I don't really, I don't mean this differently, I don't care what Tom Dolan or Ralph Becker or Ben McAdams, or, you know, Tom Pollard, Mayor of Alabama, say. I like the right, I mean, what people say, I mean, it's not just no intent, but that's not, like, that's a secret.
That's not a contract.
That's not a contract. I think what, what we want to enshrine within the charter is that if we're opposed to this connection, it won't happen. Period, end of story, and that no one can probably file later, that, you know, you told us to sign the wedding, but you didn't.
Writing a petition.
And I want to say this, that I am not as dead certain as you guys are, that under all circumstances, my connection is bad for this community. I want to see the results of an economic study, I want to see the results of what planning would happen in the basin for transit, how all the pieces get connected. To know that it isn't, the Central Utah Project will do, our personal see in 50 years, making on your part, to see costs, there's a lot of, to see, perhaps, maybe there's a change in the cost of, an underground connection is too much, and that now there's an open snow alternative, or a non-no, there's just a lot of iterations to just say, absolutely, we don't want to connect, and we don't want to participate anymore. To me, I think it's dead wrong.
I know you do. So, right in front of that, as we wait for all of this, all that information, the train has left the station, we're on board, we're all this kind of, is there somehow, something going to be true, that we want something? Because as far as I'm concerned, I'm dead set against it until you prove to me otherwise. And I'm not going to wait, I'm not going to stay with this process for five years while you prove that something that is on track to happen is or is not going to work for our community.
I don't, I don't think that there can be any proof, good or bad, until further study occurs in the NEPA process. So, and that NEPA process is a free phase, it's not, you know, you can say two years, and it slips to three or something, but, and there'll be a lot of participation, it's not like it's going to happen in the back, and maybe it'll come to us three years later and some here's the results.
I just feel like this whole tunnel issue needs to roll the whole process, it's just, it's all we're focused on, is that this might be, well, be in other ways that are cheaper and easier.
You know, the importance of that tunnel to the whole thing is yet to be determined. But my concerns have been that the trains entering Little or Big Copper Canyon do not have the ridership, nor do they create the economic engine to justify any of it. And therefore, I think that it is, so that puts us in an awkward position. I, and it gets back to what I mentioned earlier, is, is there absolutely no way that there can be a win-win made out of this, where if the tunnel turns out to be in Little Copper Canyon for the success of the whole thing, that it can be done in a way that's an net benefit to us? Are you guys absolutely sure, based on everything you know, that the answer to that is hell no?
Right now, hell no.
I know, but the question is, are you saying hell no now, and unwilling to look at any facts or facts later? That is, that is why, to me, that is short sight.
It's only a year, they've got a year to provide us facts. We've had meetings, we've had meetings with their consultants, who told us that the primary benefit is these skiers, more of these skiers. They said that specifically in a meeting that the, oh, you can get a lot more of these skiers. And I said, that's it? And they said, well. So, and we know that...
I don't, I think with you, I want to say my other thing. I don't think, you pretty said this before, don't you? I don't think that this connection through Copper Lake Canyons is designed for our destination skiers. First of all, all the things you saw in Swishland are based on different laws, 1850s planning from beginning for rail, expensive fuel, high roads, longer distances from the airport. Half of these residences, for a long, long time, is going to be to get in the car or something and go straight from the airport. And so, this connection is not for skiers coming from the airport to our community. What is, what is in the movement is creating a system now, a bus route, transit or something, that bypasses traffic jams in 248 to 2.4, and may, that some may use, I think a lot of our county talent are above using mass transit, period, when it's sort of all cheap fuel, free parking, resort basements, etc. So, what this connection is, is a transit connection, and a big share of our traffic problems are us, there are workforce, there are people living here. They're not, the destination visitors are a subset, smaller than 50% of the problem. And so, what is really needed is, we may not be able to learn that the destination visitors, out of their cars and their black Esplays and things. But what we need to do is figure out how to get the rest of us around in a way, and maybe in the long run, we'll move the needle on. We've had these transportation studies that we're all disappointed in, as recently as a month ago, when there were hundreds of millions of dollars suggested, it barely moved the needle. And so, it's that kind of stuff that I want to see more of, before I have to cast a definitive vote, yeah, or no.
My final comment on this is, I'm very concerned that about the amount of time our staff has devoted to this process. So, if we're going to stay in it, we cannot allow, our staff has so much to do to solve our problems right now, to help us in this community, we cannot have them going down so late to all these meetings and spending all their time. And, you know, I all agree to a placeholder at the table, agree to stay on the table, at the table, for the potential upside benefit, and I don't believe it's a downwind, staying in the money, step, step time, and disaster sources.
And I don't know what the staff commitment needs to be in the second, I don't think that...
I mean, mostly not.
Yeah, I mean, it sort of gets to another analogy of the exit, I think, most of the US, you went into West Pikeville, which is the other NEPA process in which you're involved. And in that one, we sought cooperating agency staffs because we wanted to be plugged in, right, wanted to be at the table. Now, I'm not suggesting that we seek that here, but I do think that there will be, you know, the NEPA analyzes some 15 to 20 different aspects of social, economic, cultural, threatened danger species, wildlife, people living here, department of law, all these things, department of justice, there will, I don't think that we can just totally disengage from that. There's a spectrum of doing nothing, to the other end is maybe being a walkway to the agency, not advocating, I'm just trying to find out what we've done in the past on things that were important.
I think it's a much different process than what Phase One consisted of. Devin?
I would say though, I am grateful for staff and being involved in Phase One the way they were, because they did not particularly, and they gave us the ideas to ask the right questions. And I am very grateful that they spent their time, took away from Summit County retreat to Mount McCord, but I thought they gave us a lot of wide, broad questions that we could ask back. I'm a little different than, which that's no joke, isn't it? Let me, let me address the topic that we're, might be a little concerned about, the city of Utah government. I continue in the House of Representatives right now, that there are only two people that know that the $5 million has been asked for by the President of the Senate to help fund Mount McCord today. And the only ones in the Senate that really know about it, there's probably less than 15 out of the 29.
They all read the papers.
They really don't. I also tell you that 99% of the legislature is not aware of the Utah testing and training range exchange that they have worked with CETA, nor are they aware of the bishop exchange that we're working on on the Willardsdale. It's a vacuum down there right now, and there's not any communication, but that's another topic. I keep asking myself the question, what can Mount McCord do for Summit County in the next 10 years? Because I don't have any faith at all, not even the consultants. We can, well, hire the consultants, we can, we can get a Google user to do this kind of work, but how are they going to resolve our problems from nearby out to the highway, out to the freeway? And I don't see Mount McCord doing it for us, no, any way, shape, or form. I'm not afraid of the $150,000, I go back to Claudia's last statement of our staff, because they're always going to be involved, and we're not going to be able to draw a curtain, because there's going to be too many things come up. Well, what about this, and what about that? I believe that Park City will stay in this, in this discussion, even if we drop out. And I believe that they will be represented at the table on those issues. I believe that this table is a lot like being the Democrat in the Utah's House of Representatives.
I think you're right.
So, do you know what?
If I could make a suggestion, we had been running late, and this was a really important conversation for us to have, and I think it's been a good one. We have a few questions. On the two documents, we were initially under the impression that we had to get those signed immediately, but one thing that we were doing, that I worked with Lani on on the trip, was creating new language, wanted to give us that exit ramp on the, what they call the charter, and then the, which is what they're going, the executive board will be approving at their April meeting. And then the other is just some, in the interlocal agreement, which is basically where we just say we commit to this amount of money for this amount of time, and it has the exit language for that. There's some contract management and administration things that don't really pertain to us, but maybe give us some flexibility. And so, that's not finalized, so we weren't going to be making the final. So, we'll find out, we can inquire about staff commitment, of time during the next process, and we'll get the language corrected in these documents.
And just a clarification, so the idea like, the world's going to go on if we don't leave that aside now, and there are these changes that came over this trip. And on the other documents, the charter, we were never being asked to sign that now. The issue is, we want to be preparing for the April meeting, which will be discussed. So, that's, so there's no... So that, so there's no urgency to make any decisions today. But the purpose of this discussion today is to see where, how we feel and everything. And then to continue to monitor, I mean, to ponder where we want to go. And then we'll even make the decision on the I O A acts, you know, fairly soon. And then the Charter is six of April, is when, you know, unless things get pushed back. And in the meantime, March sixteenth is another, another holiday week. If we as a council, or as county, want to provide, we'll come and go through that, get it in progress.
I think that'd be a great idea. And I'd like to make sure that the community knows that they can send comments to us at countycouncil@summitcounty.org. And those will come directly to us. And just know Mountain Accord in the subject line, so.
I have one last question for you, Roger. Did you ever ask the question, how much subsidizing the transportation is taking over? How much is, how much is the government subsidizing all of the trains, all of the electric cars?
Yes. Zero? No.
He can't read.
Most of them, it was a combination in different areas. It was. Well, the majority were a public-private partnership. So, for instance, the ski areas, which they called, they didn't call them ski areas, or ski resorts, and they called them the cable car companies. And then some of them were owned, because the way the land is owned over there, the land isn't owned by the resort, just the equipment. And that's integrated in the overall transportation plan. So you might have a community that has their transportation company, and literally every resident of that community is a part owner. It's like a co-op. And so.
And they do revenue, they have R F I Ts, so when you step up to lift, an R F I T chip in your ski pants triggers that. And then they allocate the revenue based on how many people were enjoyed with, versus how many people were criticized with, versus how many people were licensed. And at the end of the day, they apply what's going on here. So it's not really a result, there's not a lot of changes.
And we did tour a tunnel that was under construction. And it was taking a really bad series of bends right along the river, and just cutting through a corner of a mountain between town of Grindelwald and Lauter, I believe. And that was the, the train company director that was there with us was saying that it was great for him because he got to say what he wanted, but he didn't have to pay for it. So it was actually just the communities.
The cable car company, the cable hundred percent thing is a it was a forty million dollar tunnel. It was a four hundred million dollar total project that included adding more nodules, and more lifts, and more riding things, upgrades on the train service. The tunnel itself was forty million dollars, it's going to happen out of it.
All right, just one last statement. I do not believe that Mountain Accord will control the growth, especially on the Wasatch side, or on the right tunnel. I believe growth will be proliferated. And I also believe that the environment will not be as pristine and as nice now as it will be in thirty years now when Mountain Accord is up there. And I hope people will be able to, we could look back. So. I do not believe the environment will be as, as nice and pristine in thirty years from now as it is right now. Just because we can go through the Mountain Accord now, doesn't mean we should.
So, what's, what's the takeaway from that, that we should do nothing? Or that by, by participating in Mountain Accord will help ensure it'll be more the same decision now? We want to figure out what the conclusion is.
I am torn about staying to the table, only because of staying to the table. I personally do not believe Mountain Accord will help Summit County out in resolving our problems. And I believe that watershed up there, no matter what happens on either side of the mountain, will suffer.
Okay.
Next topic.
Tom, would you like to add anything?
No, my concerns were brought up. And I'm sure we'll be talking about this more later.